Morning, morning. Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's a little after ten, and I'm gonna call a meeting to order. First of all, we're gonna have an invitation by Brandon Ray. And see you, President. Not, uh, unless... Our Commissioner Benson opens up in prayer.
Most gracious, Father, we come before you as others we know have. We wanna thank you for the gift of life here today. Lord, I thank you for the unity of our county, Lord God, and ask you, Lord, to lead this court, Lord God, that we make the right decisions. And Lord, I just give you honor for what you done on the cross of Calvary. Lord God, for the remission of our sins while we was yet centered, you died for us. And Lord, we say thank you for that. And thank you for Newton County, and thank you for the freedom that we still operate in. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Awesome, and open it up for public hearing. Here you go, be closing public hearing. I will go through the consent agenda. Make note that number four, Newton County Health Program Report is not in. Also, at the end, there's a letter of resignation we will not recognize at this time.
Come make that motion.
Mr. Thompson would approve the consent agenda. If I would in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Here none, pass. Okay, we deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number one, discuss and properly approve presentation of Texas Constable's School Security Program. And that's, we have several speakers that understand. So Mr. Kelly and Mr. Wonders and Mr. Langston.
Morning, guys.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, one of the things that I wanted to do with the Kentucky Council is figure out a way to provide New York ISB with law enforcement presence. Sad that today, in today's day, they don't have that, but I mean, in light of Uvalde, Pasadena, and all the other ones that have happened, you know, it's almost a mandate kind of sort of that you need law enforcement in schools. Five hundred and forty school shootings since two thousand and twelve, Texas leads the nation in school shootings with forty-three, and that means each one of those had a fatality, at least one fatality. But it's not in the budget for School Resource Officer. It's not in the budget for law enforcement to be paying at an off-duty rate. It's just not the number up there. There's a way around that. It's by implementing a reserve dipping program. I have a policy established, I think all... Everybody get a copy? Oh, sure. Everybody get a copy of the...
Yeah, they got it.
Everybody got a copy of the... The drug draft... The, uh, what it would be, would be, it's not a school resource officer. Not gonna be a cop who bridge the gap between immunity, students, and law... He's gonna watch the door. Wait, this program is gonna work, kids. I'm going to purchase a vehicle. It's gonna be a marked vehicle, mark control vehicle, out of my own money, my money. And I'm gonna staff it with a reserve, eight hours a day, every day. I mean, I don't see how you'd go wrong with that. It's, uh, either the reserve program, so what I'm asking you guys today for is approval for me to hire or appoint a sufficient amount of reserves. To get this... Yo. I can't work these guys eight hours a day, four hours, or forty hours a week. You guys come in and volunteer one eight-hour day every three weeks, something along with that. My, if you read my policy, if you didn't, I'll explain it to you. My minimum qualification standard for an officer far exceed anybody's qualification region-wide. You've gotta be at least five-year officer or an intermediate piece officer. You've got to admit to an alert school. Alert is a, it's an active shooter scenario school. Within the past few years, there's a PT requirement. Again, I mean, to deal with my policy, look under the minimum requirements, I'll hire nobody with anything less than that, or backgrounds, you know. That's pretty much it.
It says no cost to the county.
Zero. So, also, we won't be liable for no one. Section eighty-six, I wanna say it's, I'm probably lying, but I think it's eighty-six point zero zero one-two. E. Edward clearly states that a reserve, if they sign on, yeah, also, I wish I would sent along with you my hiring packet, my application packet, is the personal history statement that T. holds, states that runs a thirty-four, links a thirty-four-page faculty. These officers are candid, got your mom and daddy, everybody's name. Fourth one that I've come up with, a statement of understanding, eliminating any liability for my office personally, I mean personally, a statement of liability, which eliminates the county entirely, where they sign off on it and get notarized, it literally says they cannot hold a county, which already it's in law, you can't hold a county responsible for injury very well. But just an added bonus, put it out there, we have to have a notarized statement saying they absolutely not hold, and I think it goes to state, excuse you guys, when it goes...
You send it to the pages.
What's that?
The email is fifty-two pages, your application and everything.
Okay.
This is for precinct four only.
Yes, it is for precinct, yeah. I mean, it can be implemented anywhere.
And you think you can get covered?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I've got guys knocking down the door right now. I've got, I've got, I can tell you about five guys right now that just, I mean, you're talking about SWAT certified, talking about seven, anywhere from three to seven years on the force, and real life experience. You're talking about Harris County, former Harris County deputies, or current Harris County deputies that are going into private sector. But basically, and that was a big question, why would somebody go up to volunteer? Well, here's the thing, a lot of these guys are going into the private sector, that's where the money's at, okay? Long story short, they're going into private sector, but you don't want to lose that license. It's a hard license to achieve and get, okay? So, keep that license, you've gotta keep your commission held. If you go two years without getting held, then you lose your license. So, they come with an ABCs, it's kind of a reserve, and in favor of holding their commission, we ask of them, you know, to do certain things. Come in eight hours, I think typical, like two, eight hours shifts a month is what most... There's a, there's a police department, Coffee City Police Department, he almost exclusively runs his entire police department on reserve deputies, or reserve officers.
So they could comment out of, oh, my, I don't know.
Uh, you know, a lot of them out of Harris County, yeah. From my experience, yeah. From my experience.
So I got two questions. You said you usually furnish a car with detail, decals on? Decals?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I mean, it'll be marked, yeah.
What would it be marked with?
Sir?
What would it be marked with?
It would say, you know, Newton County Precinct Four possible, and it would be probably school black, red, and white school color, which is perfectly legal in fresh protection.
So, Ms. Courtney, your, a question to you, would that be any liability in Newton County, even though he bought the, bought the car putting decals on them, let's say he gets out there on highway or something other and kills three people?
I need a chance to review this and see. I was out last week, so I didn't have a chance to speak this, I guess, with Council of Wonders, so I'm not really sure what all this says and what it releases the county of liability on, personal liability or vehicles or what. So, I need a, I need a chance to review this and see.
Just to add to that real quick, so Harris County Precinct Four, the largest, largest constable's office in the nation, they're like five, six hundred deputies. They, uh, they have a program where they hire a deputy. They, instead of giving them a county-owned vehicle, they have four different types of vehicles that they pick from, like a one-fifty, an SUV, and whatever else. And they give them a allowance to go purchase that vehicle and sell it. The county pays for it to get marked out and everything, and they provide, not the county, so the individual with that allowance provides their own insurance, own gas, and that's his personal vehicle, even though he uses it one hundred percent of county, county functions. And I asked Mark Herman's, I forget his name, Mark Herman's T. Deputy, or Captain, or whatever he was, how that worked, and he said that, no, they, they carry their insurance. That was a part of the agreement with the county to hire that many deputies, they had to make, you know, little, you know, cuts in certain areas. They carry their insurance one hundred percent. And, uh, and second, second thing, that car's not leaving the school, so they're not gonna be going down the highway. The only place they're gonna be going on public roads is literally like to the gas station, that's it. Gas station back, that car is specifically for the school perimeter, that's it. It's not, it's not gonna be used, I'm not gonna say that it's not gonna be used for anything else, because it's my car, but I mean, you know, maybe a football, tennis sport, I would be doing that. They are not going to be directing traffic, I don't want them directing traffic. I'm eliminating as much liability as possible. These guys are literally sitting in a vehicle, heavily armed, watching over it. To me, that's the best way to protect a kid in school, you know?
No, I'm not disagreeingly whatsoever, in fact, I promote it, but I wanna make sure at the same time, through our legal department, make sure everything is covered through the county. So, I'm not disagreeingly.
Good shit. Do a real ISB security on it instead of...
No, so because you're, you're working at a level above security. It would be like a, a doctor saying if he's a nurse, you know, it's not the same thing, but just like a security guard can't say if he's a police officer. And if it said police, I'm gonna tell you right now, I, I have private sector contracts, and I'm telling you, security gets zero respect at all, anyway, this is not the way to go. It would be, it would be a possible, you know, more possible officer.
So in the case of a active shooting situation, or a emergency type situation, he would only act according to your guidance, or, I mean, what, what is your plan? As you just mentioned, you found that, yeah, it was obvious, obvious that they didn't have a command system that, that could have acted sooner, and, and, and I just wonder, you know...
Yeah, and, and if you go through that policy, it is extremely specific, very specific. Simplicity works wonders, okay? I mean, it's not, and this is my opinion, of course, it's my plan, so I'll probably be biased, but, you know, going in and mingling with, and I'm not putting down any other school resource officer, or that's a wonderful program, but mingling in a cafeteria with kids and teachers and whatnot, you're not watching that door, everybody comes in through a door. You go through all school shooting scenarios, none of them breach the window or create crap, excuse me, and stuff like that, they went into the red door, every single one, okay? Because the door's up, it's that's it. So, um, what's the best way to keep that from happening? Watch the door, you know? Watch the parking lot, they gotta come from outside the end, you know, it's, it's simple, very simple, very effective, you know? So, hopefully, that, none of this will ever be needed, hopefully, but, you know.
Also, Ray, were they gonna have telephone and the radio, so anybody comes in, they're gonna tell the school, they can lock her down?
Correct. We've already, so, I've already saved the school a lot of money. We're gonna have an actual school safety assessment, which those run around five to six thousand dollars from what I understand. I've got two gentlemen, they're professionals, that come in and do it, they're gonna come in and do that for the school free. If they haven't already signed the K-9 contract, they're privately contracted with K-9, I've got a guy that does K-9, he'll come in once a month and do that for free, that's gonna save them like thirteen thousand dollars. And then on top of that, if we, you guys give me the, okay, I mean, you're talking about well over, I would say, you know, and I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not the best at math, but well over six figures in savings, you know, for you guys, the school history, everybody all the way around. And here's the bottom line, you can talk about liability all day long, but bottom line is, you got one deputy up here, one deputy down there, if something happens at that school, I mean, I've been at a standoff down there, I've been hit by a Ford down there, I've, I've been through my own fair share of stuff down there, it takes a little while to get someone in healthy, you know? And usually, it's orange carrot, is the perfect one. No fault of any, anybody in Newton County, that's just the way it is, okay? And God forbid, if something happened at that school, and your deputy down there is up here, because the deputy up here did that. You know, that, that's not good, that's not, so, just something to think about.
Okay.
Gentlemen, Commissioner's Court, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Langton and I spoke with Sid Miller, Texas Department of Agriculture that's involved in overseeing our school security. He asked me to call him in, but he's on a, on another business line. He is in the process of implementing this statewide. That's his words. There's not anybody in here that would not defend a child at our school, anywhere in the county, but the biggest concern is to have a man there, a good guy with a gun, that's gonna stop that guy, that guy with a gun. And here is an ingenious plan that costs a tiny gas and a no-kill. So even if the worst-case scenario happens, and there's a liability of something that comes in, is it worth saving a life of our children? This is a no-brainer. So, we hope, as voices of our community, that you okay this, let the man get started, because school starts in a month, and it'll be in place and ready to go.
Yeah, and just to not interrupt you, but I mean, we're talking about, I don't, I don't play with background checks, I'm an OPM certified background, that's it, background checks. Background checks are very, very, very important, but they're lengthy. You're talking about every place that this man or woman has worked, I've literally got to, to access their file, and I've got files right now, and guys are already starting to bring in and wanting to do this. I've got files right there, like that, yeah. So it's not something that I can get done in a week. And another thing, and to expand upon what you asked me, I apologize, again, I keep going back to this, but if you read that policy, I mean, I am, I expect anybody, I don't expect, I know that anybody that I appoint as a reserve deputy, I'm not gonna have to tell them what to do, they're gonna know right on, because if they don't, I'm not gonna hire them, you know? But it's like several times, and they're over and over and over, there's no duty retreat, there's no hesitation, you will immediately terminate the threat, you will immediately engage, you will immediately, 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 you look at it, Uvalde, I mean, those guys were scared, you know, I gotta give it to them, they were scared, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, fear, fear is fear, whether you like it or not, disgusting or not, that's what it was. I'm not hiring a bunch of scaredy cats, I'm hiring guys that have been in situations, some of them been shot before, some of them, they've got the same experiences I have, they know what they're doing, they're not gonna be out there with their thumbs, you know, in there, so.
Are you dreadful, you gonna go beyond their training?
What's that?
You gonna cause them, train the door on their shooting?
Oh, my, my training program is already, my training program, the target is smaller than anybody else's, and we make them fall, I'm gonna make them fall twice a year instead of once a year. Yeah, it's, my training exceeds everybody, because I'm huge on training, I'm an instructor, I work, I'm an instructor at Angelina College, I taught R L T, wrote the mental health piece officer curriculum, so I'm really, really big on training. Their training is far, 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 far exceed any, and any, and not to put anybody, any other agency down, I mean, you gotta hire guys, you gotta hire guys, you know? But, uh, yeah, I'm not gonna hire a bunch of dummies.
So you're gonna be responsible for that, for that schedule of work, work schedule?
So the only liability I really see to the county is, for example, with Uvalde, if his guys go in and don't do something, then, you know, the victims or families are all gonna wanna sue, you know, the Newton County Constable's Office, Newton County, but at the same time, like you said, should they not respond, they're gonna do that anyway, sue Newton County and Newton County Sheriff's Office for not having somebody there and responding quickly. So I don't see it adding any additional liability to the county, and this policy weighs any personal liability that they may have if they injure themselves, you know, they can't turn around and sue the county for being hurt on the job or being in that situation. So I don't see any liability. And I, I guess this is something that the school board is on, on...
Oh, yeah, the school board, the school board's one hundred percent approved that they're all for it.
Is there like a letter or something, anything from them, or anybody?
No, there's not a letter, they said, they said, so whenever I met with them, I didn't have the policy in writing yet, and they needed something from me and Ryder for, for me to get something in return for writing, but I asked the other day, because we had it on there, you know, that it's pending or whatever, but I asked the other day, and superintendent said, no, you can look out of bounds, I said, right.
That's funny, you're pending.
I mean, if anybody can pull this off and do it correctly, it's, I mean, it would be, it set a good precedent for the area, I know.
Thank you.
But I just, I wonder, I mean, there's a lot of people I don't know, so I wondered if anybody was here from the school board, or somebody to speak on behalf of the school that wants Newton County on their campus and wants us, wants it there.
So I actually put this independent this morning personally, she is a hundred percent has this school favorite list, but not the pilot, we're just asking for approval to hire...
Get to a point, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I can, I can sit out at the school all day long, I don't have a script to do, but I'm asking to do. I need to make it clear to you guys that I've gotta hire, I've got to appoint some deputies.
Well, the policy that I was providing is related directly to that program, so...
Yeah, correct.
It's not about, about a reserve program for him, it's about a reserve program for school safety, so, I, that's why my question's directed about that, because the policy I just refused about the school. So is there a separate policy that's just for your department?
Yeah, there's a separate policy just for the department, yeah. And I mean, to, to expand upon what you said, you know, again, you know, I'm, I'm down south, I'm sure you've heard it before, the, kind of the caustic, caustic, caustic things, and again, at, to no, nobody's fault with Newton County, but we have a lack of law enforcement, we don't have law enforcement, we don't have law enforcement, we don't have law enforcement. I personally, I've, I've helped with several calls, helped with calls all the time, they'll call me if somebody needs help, and that's what I'm there for, I'm not griping by any means, but, you know, I, as a father, as a father, my child is homeschooled, but if my child went to school, and you had an experienced, and probably not the best, but I'm a pretty decently experienced man that came to you and said, hey, I have a plan for this, God forbid something happened, and, and, you know, just take this example, but God forbid if something happened and that plan didn't go through, because I'm sitting here, you've got a man that's telling you, I can, I can provide, I can protect your school, I can provide this, provide that at no cost, and, you know, then something happens, you know, to me, that's, that's more of a liability than, than anything any officer can do.
All right. Y'all got any questions you wanna ask? All right, I appreciate Mr. Wonders, and, 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 you know, my hat's off to you to put on this program for, for safety of our kids.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, to me, that's top priority.
Yes, sir.
Have you, have you talked to our other constables about doing maybe the same thing?
Uh, I've talked to a few of them, yeah, uh, some of them have their own stuff going on a little bit too, it's, it's gonna be smart, man, I mean, this, this is not something I take lightly, this is not something that, uh, this is not a PR event for me, this is something that I feel real close to.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, since you're doing this, is there some way for the, I mean, I know the sheriff terms in, trades in vehicles, vehicles every once in a while, and we donate them to the fire departments or to another agency every once, we don't do it a big, because most of them are wore out.
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, it almost sounds like you're gonna implement a program like this, and you got volunteers, and you're doing all this, I mean, I can't, we, why can't we figure out some way to furnish a, a marked vehicle?
I love that, I just, I wanted to come at you guys with absolutely...
No, I understand, when I look here, I'm the same way as you are. If you can't get it done, get a little money out of pocket, take care of it, I understand it, I get it, but I think this is a, I think this is way more than being huge, this is...
Oh, yeah, it is.
This is a, this is a huge undertaking that you're, that you're, and I'm, and I'm all about those schools, I, I've been saying it for many years, that we don't have the protection here, or down there, or at Burkeville, or anywhere else around here. I understand it. I'm just wondering if the sheriff is in a position to, with his budget, to maybe go on and buy a vehicle and let's maybe seek something out of his fleet or something? I mean, because you say you're not gonna, there, it's literally gonna say... They gotta go to the gas station, or, I don't know why in the world we couldn't, why can't, if you're gonna do this for the whole community down there, why can't Commissioner Thompson burn a little fuel for it? I mean, my God, it's for our people. I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to help, you know?
Yes, sir.
And I know, and I know, and maybe what I've said, maybe I should have said, said here and kept my mouth shut, okay? But I just, I think we need to do our part, not only there, but in Newton and in Burkeville also, if we're gonna do this, and I think that you're in the prime location for it to...
Oh, yeah.
To be honest with you, I think you're in a, a lot, I think your situation is probably greater than what ours is, for the amount of traffic that you have now.
And I don't know, Courtney's probably fixing them.
Well, I don't, no, I don't wanna seem like I'm the deputy downer or the, or the rainwater in my parade, because it's a great idea, it's a good program, so procedurally, I think everybody agrees it's a great program, the county should do it, we should take part, but I'm just trying to figure out procedurally, what do we need to do based on how the agenda is read? So, discuss a proof, and approve, and appropriate approved presentation of the school security program. And so, procedurally, what do we need to do with that being the item? Because it's not written as approved of reserve deputies.
Right, yeah.
Or anything like that, it's approval of the school.
Well, the program in place, I've got to...
So, I think that's what needs to be hashed out, is if we're approving the school program, like, what are the details of that that is about to be approved?
The, the appointment of, of reserve deputies, basically, to fill the, the spots, that's what needs to be approved.
Okay, yeah.
So the agenda I'm calling this group is simply that?
Yeah, that's what it's...
In order to carry out this program that you're gonna do anyway, because you have to be able to do that, especially to the school, so what you need is approval from the deputy to be able to do the program, you know?
And who's gonna buy this fuel for it to be? Was the school gonna help you with that? Like I said, unofficially, from what I understood, I, I think that the school... Well, can, can you, can your budget support that?
Probably.
Could, can we legally do that?
I didn't hear that question asked.
We are talking about maybe figuring out, he's gonna buy this vehicle out of his pocket or out of here, something.
Okay, tell what, what is it, instead of just something, what are...
Okay. What we're, what he's asking is legally to the legislature to provide fuel for his vehicle.
And can we, can the county, since he's doing it for, basically for the county, can the sheriff's department, maybe he's got a vehicle, or maybe he's up for a replacement or something, maybe we can fast-track him and maybe take one of those vehicles, instead of him buying it out of his pocket and furnishing fuel for it, could the county maybe do something like that? And then Commissioner Thompson?
I absolutely believe that's a good idea, that'd be something you wanna confirm with the auditor, but that would just be a matter of housekeeping. but that would just be a matter of, of housekeeping, of switching the vehicle over to their inventory and a budget amendment to switch some fuel over to theirs.
Yeah.
I don't see how that would be, you know, why that would be a problem. Do the people want the sheriff's office, the local municipal board, and everyone from the area, people from the commissioner to, yeah.
Literally, a county vehicle, legally will be.
Yeah, literally, county, county.
Why don't, why don't we approve what you've asked for? We need some of that, come back to the court part.
Okay. We're, we're actually gonna approve the presentation.
So if you go in your actual, um, in your action item, if you'll say, um, in your action item, if you'll say, approve the presentation of the Texas Constable Security Program and put the hiring of deputies, of deputies, that way we'll take care of all of it in one. Do everyone wants to, still move?
I'll make that motion, guys.
I'll say that.
Data, she won us this rated, I think.
I'll make that motion that we approve the, uh, the, uh, how you, how to say, the presentation and also the hiring of the reserve deputies.
And just a comment on that, uh, being the L B reserves of the county, uh, that that will include an email address for those deputies, because they will be an employee of sorts of the county, non-paid, non-compensated, no interest, nothing, but they'll still technically be part of the county, that they'll get a county email address if, if, uh, their supervisor requests, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, I, I, yeah, uh, yeah, I've got, so there's a couple of things I'm working on right now, uh, under wraps to try and bring money into the county. One of them is seizure funds, and we've got that coming. Uh, I don't wanna mention the amount or anything like that yet, because I don't really, I don't really have a huge idea, but probably within the next six months, we might have some stuff going on. But the guy that I've got handling this is working undercover in order to get, so whenever we do, whenever we see someone's bank account or bank records or don't see them, whenever we, uh, get subpoenaed for them, we go through the A G's office. A G sends us the documents, but they send them in an encrypted file. Well, I've got a, a guy working on that, and I've got stuff that I'm working on, and I'm having to get those emails sent to me, I'm gonna have, I'm having to, uh, decrypt them or encrypt them, whatever, whatever the term is, and then I'm having to send them back. It's just, I mean, it's a rat race when he could just simply have an email address, because you can't, so the A G's office, the way that they determined that you were official was by your email address. It is a, you know, howard.wonders@c o dot newton dot, yeah, okay, that's an official law enforcement email address or, or county email address. You know, howard.wonders@gmail.com, they're not gonna send, you know, uh, encrypted records to a person.
So I was gonna comment, and the reserve deputies that he has, um, or people working for him will also need a county email address, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, the motion, may I, if I'm being second, Mr. Thompson, is there any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Same sign, opposed, here, none, passed. Uh, number two, to discuss an appropriate.
Thank you.
Uh, and, uh, th- this is a declaration that, uh, is in y'all's packet, but, uh, I don't wanna take any action on it today, but if y'all want to discuss it, we would discuss it. And now we'll move on to number three, uh, discussing appropriate, uh, proven as Frances Coggins to serve as the representative of Newton County for the Board of Trustees at Burt. She's been there for some time already and, uh, is willing to serve again, so I need y'all approval.
I'll make that motion.
That motion.
Second.
Thank you, John. Motion, may I, Mr. Benson, second, Mr. White, we approve Ms. Coggins for the representative of Newton County Board of Trustees for Burt, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Same sign, opposed, here, none, passed. Number four, discussing appropriate approve, uh, the twenty sixteen flood, twenty seventeen, Harrison Harvey buyout program, guideline provision, revision number three, related to adopting this revision, uh, appraisal methodology. And, uh, Mr. Taylor? Oh, you gonna send your representative up there?
So with this, what this, uh, amendment will do, uh, reduce to the guidelines is, is what we were running into, normally a, a buyout program would offer pre-flood free market value with the idea that that would let the homeowner more fully recover, but what we're seeing in the, the recent months is with COVID inflation, crazy housing market, was that people were actually able to sell their, their homes on an open market, at current market value for more than what they, they could have bought pre-flood. Uh, so, and we, which would of course, um, still leave that house there and, and prone to flooding in the future, and that's the goal of this program, is to, is to eliminate those houses. So, um, the G L O actually came up with this methodology to help, um, the situation, and we're just wanting to add it to the guidelines, and what it would allow us to do is we'd be in a pre-flood for a market appraisal, and we'd also be in a current for a market appraisal, and we could compare those two, whichever one would benefit the homeowner the most is the one that we would be able to use. But, that makes sense, there's any questions about that?
So does that pertain to the one that we've already bought out and we should go and reissue or?
No, because.
Just one in the future?
Just the one for later, and that's the way that the new guidelines from July seventh and the offers may go forward, because this is kind of a new, a new development, we don't like that would have affected the ones in the past.
You're gonna, uh, pre-market appraisal and a up-to-date market.
And up-to-date, because there's, there would, you know, if, if for some reason someone wasn't able to repair their home, there is still a possibility that that pre-flood for market values would be a better benefit for them. But if someone completely repaired their home, maybe even did some upgrades, plus with the rising value of homes these days, um, the current could actually be more of a benefit for them. Just kind of depends on which, what their situation is.
All right.
Your motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
May I, Mr. Pond, and second, Mr. Thompson, that we approve the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, uh, buyout program guideline revision number three, to, uh, adopt the revision, uh, appraisal methodology. Uh, any more discussions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Same sign, opposed, here, none, passed. Number five, discussing appropriate approved bid for precinct four road projects for County Road forty-one fifty-four, thirty-one eleven, thirty-one twelve, thirty-one thirty, forty-one twenty-three, yes, sir.
Hey, um, our office was asked to go out for bids just to give a price on these roads. Um, we were basically told, um, he didn't have enough money in his budget, but he's supposed, uh, Mr. Thompson's supposed to be getting some money back from grants. But until that grant money comes back, that line item, he doesn't have enough money in the budget or even in his cash account to go through for those roads. But I did, I did, we did go out for quote, and there is a, shows how much.
What I would like to do is, it's in my budget, one of these roads is a dedicated road.
Okay, which road is that?
That's thirty-one thirty.
Thirty-one thirty, okay.
That's in the subject.
And you've dedicated road, you would happen to think your dedicated road to be the eighty-one seven fourteen nine seven?
And I would like to do, I, cash account, I'd like to do forty-one fifty-four.
Okay, that's gonna lead to the cash account to finish out the year with two hundred, around two hundred thousand dollars. Um, Liz, do you know when approximately he's gonna get reimbursed for his, um, grant work?
There's two of those in progress, um, they're at the state level, um, which they have seven drugs and they're. So we're looking at maybe another way to argue.
And how much are those, do you? They're all fucking bad.
Um, school of one fourteen.
For both?
Both.
But that's not what I was told, I was told.
Now, he does have something here. Train of that project, and another project he's got.
I was saying.
I don't have the total, but we discussed this.
Okay. So that's where you're gonna be in your cash account?
So he's good. Uh, you're good.
So you're just gonna approve thirty, uh?
Just the two roads.
Okay.
Right now, and put the other two on hold until we get money to finance. Yeah, that, we won't touch them until we get some money to finance.
So we just had that one bid?
Yes, sir, it's only one bid from Gulf Coast, no other bids standing in.
And we'd be, I personally sent invitations to.
And we can, we sent emails out to all of the, I mean, you've sent all, a lot of emails out, for the materials, roads.
That's, it's not uncommon.
I know, it happens every year.
The, the way the prices are fluctuating, I don't know how a person bids on anything now.
And we want to vote on that, on those two roads?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Thompson, uh, uh, forty-one fifty-four and thirty-one twelve.
Thirty-one thirty.
I mean, thirty-one thirty.
Here, second.
A second, good.
Motion, may I, Mr. Pond, and second, Mr. White, we approve the, uh, bids for County Road forty-one fifty-four and thirty-one thirty to Gulf Coast. We don't know that amount of money.
Yes, sir, I'll be right here behind you.
What is the total?
For thirty-one thirty is eighty-one thousand, seven fourteen nineteen. For forty-one fifty-four, which is one oh two, two sixty-six, fifty-five. Thirty-one thirty will be coming out of this dedicated road.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Not, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed.
Thank all in.
Here, none, passed. Okay, number six is discussing appropriate approved bids for annual fuel and road material, sure.
Okay, we received three, uh, bids for the road materials, uh, from a kayak rock, Texas material on the road, uh, which is, uh, Gulf Coast and Jack Alexander. Uh, the two bids for the fuel were billed over in Sun Coast Resource, and I'm asking for to just accept all three for the materials and the two for the fuel.
What was the materials?
Uh, a kayak rock, Gulf Coast, and Jack Alexander. And we did send out to Williams, I just confirmed in my office, we did, we sent out to several different.
Balkan didn't bid on it?
About Big Four.
And we sent out emails to someone that it was time, that we had to have bids in by certain date.
Big Four?
And that, this is the only three that came in to the.
Did send, send the bid out to Big Four?
Yes, we sent all of them, we sent emails out.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion that we accept, uh, uh, the three for the road materials and the two for the fuel.
Second.
Motion, may I, Mr. Pond, and second, Mr. Thompson, we accept the three, um, material contractors and the two suppliers on fuel. Any, any discussion? On, on the first side?
Aye, aye.
Opposed, same sign, here, none, passed. Number seven, discussing appropriate approved request for budget amendment for district clerk's office for money is in the amount of sixty-four hundred to hire a part-time employee to train for Miss Nikki's position. And, uh, I'd be training her to start, uh, August the first. And, uh, she, she'll be taking the district clerk's office, uh, in Danielburg. And so she's going to, uh, train this person for this, uh, time before, uh, actually changing to the clerk's office, uh, position.
Was there any money, uh, for part-time help in that position, budgeted?
Um, that is taken half this year, but they had ten thousand every year, and they really, uh, planned here with the budget.
So we didn't, we don't have any of it here. Got some money to do there?
No. We have to see right in the summer, what's coming up this year, I just wish I had the judge.
Even have to come out and continue the session. And, and we're almost completed that, depleted that. They're all turned. Says they're all turned it to.
You know how much you got in there, Winnie, Nikki?
I'm sorry?
Do you know how much you got in there? You don't?
Uh, I was off. We went and made twenty-nine hours, really. We got to just get somebody, you know, ideas, you know, before I went there in January.
Do you know how much is in there, Liz? No?
It's just a miniature to me.
So it really just be a budget amendment for your office?
Yes, sir.
And you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there any way we could reduce that time limit to like October, starting in October, instead of August?
We could, I could, I was thinking that did grand jury and that's something that allows somebody to be involved in, like, that we don't see that until February, and I'm not sure what the prospect will be. I'd really like to have somebody involved with your selection process before, really. Um, whatever you guys. Some additional work. It's a lot of.
And it's the same girl gonna fulfill the spot once, the time, the position? So it's really a training?
Yeah, it could just, so we're going with January, if that no problem. Because I'll have to be on, in January for a week.
Yeah.
So all of that, if we own one person.
When you post it, maybe there'll be somebody that's more qualified than the one you train?
I remember.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
I make that motion that, uh, as long as it's a budget amendment within your funds.
Second.
May I, Mr. Pond, and second, Mr. White, we approve. Motion may move us to find me a second, Mr. White, will approve the budget amendment to remove the money from, uh, her department, in her department, uh, payroll to part-time, uh, in discussion. Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Okay, number eight is discussing probably approve the list of mutant county surplus property, uh, properties for sale with a real estate agent. And, uh, that's just oil price made to, uh, go into the negotiation to hire us a, a real estate agent to, uh, see if we can get rid of some of that surplus property. Make the motion that we, uh, prove the list under the surplus property. About getting a real estate agent to sell it. Here second.
Second.
Motion may, may, Mr. White, second, Mr. Pombin, will approve the list of mutant county surplus properties for sale to a real estate agent. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Number nine, to discuss an appointed officer or employee to calculate the twenty-twenty-two new, no new revenue or voter approval tax rate. And we can appoint, uh, Ms. Melissa, she's qualified, Ms. Marjorie Herring's qualified, you can also hire a CPA. That's the only ones I know of that's qualified to calculate that. As to Mr. Burke, or Miss Burke, she's been doing this all these years. Uh, thank Ms. Melissa's always done.
Second.
Uh, motion may move Mr. Benson, second, Mr. Pombin, we, uh, appoint Ms. Melissa Burke, our tax assessor and list collector, uh, to that position to calculate the twenty-twenty-two new, no new revenue and voter approval tax rate. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Number ten, discuss, and DOE to calculate the voter approval rate at one point oh three five, or one point oh eight, which applies to the taxing unit affected by this after the declaration. I've had that discussion with Ms. Melissa. Come on up, Ms. Melissa, and, uh, tell us the bad news.
Okay, the bad news is, okay. Easy way to know whether pandemic, epidemic, droughts.
And we in all three of them.
What qualifies, yes, sir. What qualifies is if one thing. One taxpayer of them is affected. Say hurricane. tornado. If the appraisal district, who's, goes out and one home is affected. That's the easy way to know. If, if a home, if property is affected. Uh, I'm not saying it's fair. Um, there was a little loophole, and last year, and we need to close that loophole. Uh, Senate Bill fourteen thirty-eight, and it clearly states that epidemic epidemic. And then. I do, uh, have a thought about the drought. But it said, you know, it's clearly stated drought. I did see on, uh, as right now, or not, I'm going to have a disaster this, unless there's something. I looked at the last disaster update, declaration update, and it didn't have our, we missed it. But according to the law, and we, the, a good rule of thumb, if a home property has to be reevaluated because it's damaged, then we can use that. So we're looking at one point oh three five.
So you really don't have a choice?
Yes. It, we used to, but the legislative may end. And, and the tighter. It looks like it's still one, three, five, ten.
Is people gonna understand that?
I will, I'm going to have to help them understand it and make them understand it and explain it, and explain it, and explain it, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's easy.
Yeah.
They didn't tell us about that one, this.
They didn't.
Should have been discussed.
Yeah, I agree.
Here motion.
So I'll make that motion.
You're mine here. Here second.
Second.
Motion may move Mr. White, second, Mr. Benson, we, uh, use the one point oh three five as our approval rate, uh, for taxing unit. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Number eleven, discussing appropriate move insurance proceeds received from TAC in an amount of two thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents from sheriff department. Reimbursement, the repairs to the sheriff's department vehicle. We have reimbursed from the sheriff's department here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good morning, uh, Judge and Commissioners. Is it any way we can take eleven to fourteen together because it's gonna run together?
Yeah, just one second, Sheriff, and, and we also, there's, uh, number twelve and number thirteen with different amounts. And, uh, number twelve being one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, and, uh, number thirteen being twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. So, uh, go ahead, Sheriff, and, uh, make your presentation.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, everyone, again. Uh, on request that we take the two thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, uh, uh, that we received from the Texas Association of Counties to put back in the count zero one zero, uh, TAC five six zero dash four five one, reimbursement into the count for automotive repairs that we received from a vehicle that was damaged. And moving to the next item, uh, this is the same type from TAC, Texas Association of Counties, in an amount of one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars uh, back to the account of zero one zero, TAC five six oh, TAC four five one, uh, in the repair, uh, account, uh, for a vehicle that was, uh, damaged.
Mind we go and get that team too?
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, and the next item is a vehicle that was totaled, uh, totaled out, uh, in a wreck, and we received a reimbursement check less our deductible uh, from the Texas Association of Counties, in an amount of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents to the sheriff's department. This account is the account that we purchased our vehicles out of, which is zero one zero, TAC five six zero, TAC five five two. Uh, we requested our money be put back to assist us in buying vehicles for this calendar year, which we have not been able to yet. We're still working on it. And item fourteen, last item, this is a reimbursement that we put up front, uh, when we had to get our, our recording system done, that debt co, debt card comes and reimburses us. And this is a debt card, uh, reimbursement, uh, check that we received, uh, in an amount of three thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars to the sheriff's department account. Zero one zero, five seven oh, TAC seven six. Uh, that payment was at the account to VistaCom. And that, any questions?
Oh, you explained it pretty well, my pleasure. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Uh, okay, let's go back to number eleven and, uh, approve to move that, uh, insurance proceeds from, uh, TAC of two thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars, seventy-five cents over to the account oh, one oh, dash five oh six, oh, five six oh, dash five one, five, four five one. I'll get it right in a minute. Need that approval.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion may move Mr. White, second, Mr. Benson, approve, moving the, uh, money, um, insurance proceeds by this to his account. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Number twelve is, is to move the proceeds of one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars, uh, from TAC to this count oh, one oh, dash five oh six, dash four, five one, to the sheriff's department. Your motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion may move Mr. Pombin, second, Mr. Thompson, we approve moving the money from TAC to his account of one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Uh, likewise, on the number thirteen, it'd be twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollar fifty cents, uh, to the account of zero one zero, five six oh, five five six. Any motion?
Thank you, motion.
Second.
Motion may move Mr. White, second, Mr. Thompson, we move the money from TAC to the sheriff's account, about twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollar fifty cents. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Number fourteen is to remove the proceeds from debit cog, amount of three thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars to the sheriff's account. Zero one zero, five seven oh, five seven six. Uh, your motion?
I make that motion.
Motion may move Mr. Benson, second, Mr. White, would approve moving the money from, uh, debit cog to the sheriff's account. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Here none, pass. Number fifteen, discuss probably approve payment, uh, from the general fund to TDM to recoup, uh, the fund, uh, FEMA DR one seven nine one, zero one seven, uh, three six, six.
This is on the same, uh, projects, but you remember I talked about the three projects, one seventeen ninety-one, this is the biggest one. And it's gonna be one more. I don't, I'm trying to find out which it is, but I haven't found out. Um, the total they're asking reimbursement for, you know, four thousand, one thousand nine hundred ninety-eight. With, um, but I did send, look at it, what we got, the, on DDTX, we got those contracts finished, and I spoke with my representative at TDM. They're working on getting that money to us as fast as they can. It looks like our part that we're gonna get back on that is around three hundred and fifty thousand, maybe a little more. We're getting some money back from COVID expenditures from public assistance, uh, seventy-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. And also have some reimbursement requests out on cash communication, forty-two sixty-six, that's two hundred and four thousand. I don't know where that was at. Yet, they're reviewing, um, what I've sent to them. And that is about almost seven hundred forty-six thousand dollars that is gonna be coming back to us soon. Um, so that's gonna help us out with this that we're having to pay out. We are also, um, still working on, I found a few things that I think is gonna help to get some of this back that we're having to pay then when we appeal. Um, I've also heard that from, um, Mr. Gettrud, who's the grant administrator, the mental planning, now in Oregon. I've had a little bit of correspondence back and forth with him. He is digging in his own files to see what he saw that I didn't yet. So we are making some progress, it's just that TDM wants this so that they don't hold our money with our other TDM projects.
How much was that again?
Uh, three hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-nine cents.
My other question, um, on the budget, we had a deficit budget for twenty twenty-two that we adopted. Um, you put, uh, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents on grant money that was supposed to be coming in. My question is, is this that, is this part of that grant money that's gonna cover this budget? Because right now, with this three forty-two, one ninety-one, ninety-eight, and the one ninety-eight, three thirty-nine, sixty-seven, that's five hundred and forty thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents that was not projected in this budget, along with the cottonwood payment for, out of the general fund this year for a hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and ten forty-four. Because if you remember correctly, that was not resolved when we adopted the budget for twenty twenty-two. And if we have to pay the property insurance, we're looking at another two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two forty, which is a total of one million, fourteen, eight eighty-two, ninety-one that we weren't projecting to spend in twenty twenty-two. I just want the court to be aware of all this, because that's where we're sitting. And then Liz said also there's one more coming in, Liz, from TDM.
Yeah, there's gonna be another one, uh. When they originally told us we had this problem, I don't know, two months back, the last one was it around a hundred and fifty, something like that, I can't remember.
Which one?
The last one, about in twenty twenty.
That.
One that'll be coming in in twenty twenty, uh, the last one for seventeen ninety-one. It was three projects.
Yes, I don't know that, I don't know. I didn't really, I had to send the email the other day because I, on Friday, when I got the commissioner agenda, I had no idea of this letter. I had no idea that we had these to go back. I find out on the agenda request. So when it was sent out to the judge.
No, that, I just felt like, is, is it possible if it comes to the judge's office, because I think he comes here first, and you'll just copy me along with Liz? Because she was having to work offside, and she had this out before we, so therefore I didn't have no idea. And so I've been trying to do some work over the weekend, trying to figure out where we're sitting. Because I know that when we did the budget adoption for twenty twenty-two, we, it was a eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents that we were going to use from grant money coming in, and also three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty-eight cents that we found out this year that we cannot use from the ARCA fund. We were gonna use that as well. So we're looking at one point one, one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand and sixty-seven dollars worth of deficit that we carried over, plus another million, fourteen, eight eighty-two, ninety-one.
And I just want, I didn't want to interrupt, but I wanted to bring that to the court's attention.
Luke, million?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we did add it for this year with the insurance, the cottonwood, and, uh, and so far the two, uh, five hundred and forty thousand five thirty-one sixty-five that we have to pay down to TDM, back to pay back to TDM. And from my understanding from that, it's basically projects that didn't close, that had curative issues.
And it's that, and there was the procurement documents that are for those, that's what we're working with, with the guy, Morgan, with Metro Planning. We're trying to get, he's looking at his files to see if he saw, and then there were some issues with, um, uh, it was the procurement, it was some cost with how they detailed the cost on the managed project management. And it's just basically them explaining how they, what they did on their invoices, instead of just an invoice for a extra million dollars.
And I hope you're working on that as well, okay. Um, on the SRA, they front twenty-five percent of each one of these projects that had curative issues. We will eventually have to pay them back. Do you have a total of what we're gonna owe the SRA?
That's what I'm supposed to get with them and see where we're at, because it's gonna be, they're gonna owe us something, but I don't know about this twenty-five percent that they fronted yet. We've gotta sit down, because they've had all the time to the board down there.
Right, and that's what I found out from this.
We've gotta sit, we're gonna sit down and figure out what washes, what doesn't wash, and, you know, what they owe us, we owe them.
So my suggestion to the court and to the judge is that we have a budget workshop as soon as possible to try to figure out the solution to this problem that we've, we've got. I know that you've put on the agenda this same property. I mean, that may be, we, we may, I, I mean, we have a problem, and we need to get a solution for it.
Also, I want to make, on for the record, uh, this is no responsibility of this court or this, uh, problem that we're having today.
This is between two thousand and twelve and two thousand sixteen.
So, uh, uh, I just want my, this on the record, we're not responsible.
So this, so this is something that Greg?
No, no, what happened was, from what I understand, what happened was, TDM paid us for projects.
I understand.
And they had a list, and some of them didn't get bought out.
I understand.
Instead of the county at that time sending back the money for the projects that didn't get bought out, and there was some issues too, with, I think, some, we, we owed Garland Smith and him for doing their research, part of it. But from what I've been told from TDM, it's basically, we should have reimbursed the money, and we didn't at that time. So therefore, that money's been carried over, and it's been used through the years. There's no, I mean, I don't know where it's at. That was before mine, and.
Us.
Yes, so.
So, uh, back to my original question. This is something that Greg walked, this was the first buyout. And that was on the River Road, correct? The second buyout on, on River Road. That's what this, and that's the one that Greg was doing, correct?
Metro Planning and this company, Obso Rest.
Okay. Well, we're gonna have to figure it out, so.
Yeah, we gotta come up with a solution to the problem.
Well, right now, we need to repay this money. Because we got a deadline, we gotta make, and if we don't make that, then, uh, all reimbursement that's due us, we will not receive.
But it's gonna be a pretty much, it's not gonna be a hundred percent wash, but it's gonna be really, really close.
And these numbers that like they talk, or the first two are pretty much, are pretty good.
So.
The COVID, I know, seventy-one, seven seventy-eight, I know we're getting that back, it's a hundred percent. The NPTX is, and I figured it out, seventy-five percent is quarter of a thousand, our part. And that's, that's, it's gonna be a little more than fifty.
So is Greg, is, so is Greg helping us? We're trying to figure this out?
I am having to contact, uh, Jed Truitt with Metro Planning, he was there, we're in Genon, grant administrator, and he's discussing with Greg, Greg refuses to talk to me.
Okay.
And I get Courtney in the middle to help get some stuff too. But my last correspondence through Mr. Truitt is he's trying to get some.
And I understand what you're saying about the wash, but that money right there, the eight hundred thousand dollars that we had put up for the budget for this year. So therefore, we're still gonna be in the deficit at a larger amount.
I'm just trying to make it sound a little better.
I know you're trying to make what you're trying to do, but I'm just realistic, and I'm just saying this is the way.
That, that's the discussion we'll have in our workshop, uh, budget workshop.
I will try to have some more detailed numbers for y'all because it's more than, like, it's an H O T, it works, it's a six, to whatever, the house, to get them back. There's probably more than that, I just did some rough numbers, uh, Friday evening. So, um, it's like two other people are getting it back, but I will have some more detail on others that will be put in soon. I know what the burden be able to handle, because it's hard for me to come before going to tell y'all if they're gonna take this money back. You know, I've had to go back, when you go behind some line, when it's done, so I've had to go back and, and gather files here, files there, I was down in the dungeon for hours, digging through those files, trying to find something that come out of the dungeon's office, the department's office.
What year did all this?
Just printed around.
Had to be fourteen.
And, but the way it was in there, so it also.
Yeah, twenty-teen.
For the audience out here who have not understanding what's going on, we're actually going through an audit period, and going through this audit period, that's where we get caught, where they have paid us money that we wouldn't do, and we haven't paid it back in a, in a responsible time. So now it's left up to this court to repay this money that was for previous administration's downfall.
So when you gotta pay this?
It will be paid, it will be paid, stay there, check Wednesday.
See you on twenty-third.
Yeah, and they, and they mailed it, you know, they mailed it like the last time they mailed it, uh, parties on the track.
What is it, do we have, do we have any? What is our legal? And I know y'all can't answer that, but I know Courtney's back there, maybe still there.
Yeah.
Uh, what legal standings does the county have with this? Because he, the county had a contract with Mr. Wabi
They'll say it all.
To take care of this.
Yeah, it goes back on.
So remotely, we didn't do our part, so it falls back to us because we didn't make Mr. Wabi do his part.
Come in and said.
So that signing that contract means nothing, right?
Now, with the ones I'm working on, forty-two, twenty-three, forty-two sixty-six, um, they audited us when we got it. There was a couple of them at the very, a couple of requests for reimbursement at the very beginning that did the, um, the contract on beforehand, and I think it was two. But anyway, that's been, we fixed those in the process because I've been closed out with those right now. But as we've been going with the request for reimbursement, they audited me, and they, they would pay us, we had all everything there. So, we have made sure that everything is correct on request for reimbursement, and we're where we're at now.
Why?
We don't have this problem.
Why, why is Greg not wanting to help us?
Did he ever deal with him?
But I'm just saying, he, I mean, he's no, we have contracts with Mr. Taylor over there.
Um, um, when I've been working on this stuff, two years, when he passed.
I'm not pointing fine, but look like, look like he's, it looks like he's as much responsible for it as we are.
The county's ultimately responsible.
I understand that.
That's why I've been working to work on this.
I mean, I get that, but I'm trying to get him to work with us to where we can get this, maybe we don't owe this.
We only, we had some.
Yeah, but maybe not the whole amount.
That's why I'm still working, indeed.
Yeah.
So, after we paid him the fifteen thousand, he, we no longer, we don't, okay, but still, uh, there is no justification for him not working.
On the forty-two, twenty-three, forty-two sixty-six for that, that we, we fixed the contracts and paying fifteen thousand, the product, that's on the two that I'm enclosed out on right now. He did assure Courtney that he was helping us, we needed help.
Just didn't want to go back.
This, yeah, it was under a different company name. So, I'm, I'm working on it, I did every day, I work on it, and Heather, Jamie, and she's down with people, and it's all.
We are, we are allowed to appeal, appeal this after we pay this money back, but, uh, it's a must that we pay it back first, and then, uh, we also, the hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars we approved uh, two, three weeks ago, uh, we've already started an appeal process, likewise on this one.
Make that motion. I'll second.
Motion been made by Mr. Palm, and second, Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, paid the money back to, uh, TDM for FEMA DR one seven nine one, zero one three six, TAC uh, by July the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion? Not all favors, say I.
Uh huh.
Same sign of pose, here none passed. Number sixteen and number seventeen, uh, will lock together since, and then the COVID nineteen and Hurricane Laura disaster declaration to August the eighth, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Make that motion. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Palm, and second, Mr. Vincent, that we, uh, extend the COVID nineteen declaration and Hurricane Laura disaster declaration to August the eighth, twenty twenty-two. Any more discussion? Uh, all favors, say I. And retain the discussion, appropriate approves the payment of bills, and before we get started, Miss Sherry, uh, are we paying the bills that's already been paid, or are we?
Is it the bill for, uh, Jane, yes?
What?
The month before.
In other words, we are paying the bills.
Yes, so are you gonna pray from each commissioner and yourself to pay, so this is just your, for the court. Let's say, I just know where they are.
Back, uh, several months ago, we we went through the court that we would approve the bills before they were paid, and you said you would supply us with those dates, and, uh.
I will do that, I, I, we will do that, if that's how you want to do it, please.
Well, that's, that's what went through the court, I didn't make the motion.
I didn't even think that you said that when they're all signed already by the commissioners and yourself, that they're already approved. So I will continue on, but I can't do that.
Well, that's, that's the way the court wanted it, they wanted to approve the payment of bill before they actually was paid. Am I right, Court?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
So, uh, you'll have to give it to my office so I can get it posted seventy-two, our report.
Yes.
And, uh, we'll receive.
We're ready, General?
Yes, ma'am.
General Fund, six hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-one. District Attorney's Statement, two thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and four cents. Redding Ridge General, one hundred five thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Redding Ridge Precinct One, twenty thousand fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Redding Ridge Precinct Two, twenty-seven thousand three twenty-eight sixty-eight. Redding Ridge Precinct Three, twenty-one thousand two sixty-three ninety-three. Redding Ridge Precinct Four, twenty-one thousand three fifty-one forty. Port House Security, eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. V A W grant, five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct One, five thousand sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct Two, fifty-two hundred forty-three cents. Commissioner, Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, twenty-seven thousand forty-four dollars and sixty cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct Four, sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Record Preservation, two thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. The Sheraton Contra Band, six dollars and forty-two cents. Solid Waste disposal, thirty-two thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Voter, voter registration, five thousand nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Newton County Library, eleven thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Historical operating, one thousand one hundred one dollars and sixty-one cents. District Attorney Contra Band, three hundred twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Passion irrigation grant, two hundred twenty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Port House Emergency Grant, one hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. FEMA Grants, thirty-nine thousand one hundred ninety dollars and fifty-seven cents. Uh, Grants, sixty-five thousand three hundred eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Newton County Enterprise Facility, five hundred sixteen dollars, and Technology Fund, four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents. For a total of all funds, one million two hundred sixty-three thousand thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
The commission pays the bills. Or if they. Here, second.
You have to see, yeah, okay, I'm a little. Thank you.
Here, second.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White, and second, Mr. Vincent, we pay the bills, any discussion? Not all favors, say I.
Uh huh.
Same sign of pose, here none passed, here the law still adjourned.
Make that motion. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White, Mr. Vincent, and second, Mr. White, as we adjourn us. It's, uh, eleven twenty-nine.